Meeting called to order. This is the Oakland Council meeting of May 14th, 2024. Would the clerk please read this statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Thank you. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Casio, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Honor, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment. Asylum, please. You see, just thank you. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Mayor Kamala.
Present.
Councilwoman Gofredo.
Here.
Councilman McCann.
Here.
Councilman Pigna Tally.
Here.
Councilman Saliani.
Here.
Councilman Slasinski.
Here.
Councilman Talamena.
Here.
All right, we're going to start off the mayor's report, and then we're going to go right into the swearing-in of our firefighters. All right, so the big news is paving. I know there's a lot of people on Lakeside, Monhegan, and other areas of town that have been waiting for probably a close to two years for paving, months. We did have a pre-con meeting that took place last Thursday, and the following roads will be paved. Lakeside Boulevard, Monhegan Avenue from Lakeside Hill Boulevard to Hiawatha. Hiawatha Boulevard, East Oak Street, a portion of East Oak Street, Franklin Ave. to 287. Lakeview Terrace, Jerome, River Road. Also, we're going to be working up at the reserve to improve Hunter's Run Midville Road, the exit coming out of Hunter's Run, out of the reserve, and also the Truman Boulevard side coming out of the reserve. Also, we're going to be repaving Lawler from Butternut up to 202, Raritan Road, Spear Street from, to the Ryerson Dead End, Woods End in the reserve, Shelley Street, and also the police station parking lot. I also just received word today also from the county that Bergen County has now going to be paving Franklin Ave. from the bottom up to the Franklin Lakes Line, and currently the bid will be going out on June 4th for paving Franklin Ave. as well. That is indeed a county road. Shortly after that, probably a month or two after that, public service will be repaving the roads that were down in the Truman Boulevard area and also up on Stone Fence repairing the roads that they had dug up for the gas main replacement. Also, the Seminole sidewalks have been completed. We put in a grant for State of New Jersey through Holly Shapizi's office so that we can continue the sidewalks from Franklin, from Hiawatha down to Franklin Ave., down through the Van Allen House so that there's safe passage from that side of the town to get to the downtown area. It really affects close to one-third of our students that are walking down to middle school and also the high schools. So that's the project we're working on. Paper shredding will be this Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 to 12:00. The first hour will be Oakland, to Oakland residents only. Update for the Ramapo River Reserve. As of today, all the reflectors have been put on both sides of the roads of Glen Gray, making it safer, safer and easier for people to see as they're traversing the road. The mirror that the residents requested for the, at the end of Glen Gray Road in 202 has come in as of Monday. The DPW is currently working on getting that installed. Also, two of the four speed signs have currently come in, so those will also be placed to slow down traffic both in the reserve and outside the reserve down Glen Gray Road and as you're coming out the other side as well. We've also worked, we're also working with Mawa to install an additional two streetlights on, on Glen Gray Road. It's very dark down there at night, so that's also in progress as well. As I've spoken at the last meeting, the gas has been secured that crosses the bridge into the reserve, and right now the contractor is currently securing supplies so they can start working on the temporary supports for the utilities that are currently traversing the bridge. Also, tonight, and tonight only, Borough Hall is open until 9:00 PM to today, May 14th, for late-night voter registration. This is the last day to register if you wish to vote in the primary. Mr. Gelsa, just as a, could you provide a quick update on what's going on with the dump if you've heard anything through your contacts?
There has been no update.
All right. With that being said, I did reach out to the county executive last week. I did receive a phone call from his office yesterday. I'm asking the county executive to come out here, just like the, we asked the county commissioners to really understand where this dump is located and why it's important that they do not pass this so that it can protect Oakland from, from this, this travesty that's taking place up there. Also, the Bush Plaza update, currently right now, the electrical conduit is being installed. While the sidewalk work is done, the bricks are in, they're working out sprinkler and, and electrical work right now, and obviously this is taking a little bit longer than we expected because it certainly is weather-dependent as we're working through this project. And the last piece of news I have also is the new senior bus is being delivered tomorrow for the seniors. And I have two other pieces of information. Number one, there's a comedy night for cancer for the Mothers Club of Oakland. That'll be Friday, May 17th, 2024, Portobello's banquet. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the buffet dinner begins at 6:30. It's $75 for a person, and for more information, you can email mothersclubofoakland@gmail.com. And the most important announcement is Memorial Day Parade is Sunday, May 26th, 2024, starting, starting at 1:00 PM. This year's grand marshal will be Army Infantry Officer Jack Ackerman, and the parade route will go from Ramapo Valley, Ramapo Valley Road from Dogwood to Oak Street. After the ceremony, the American Legion will serve refreshment at Satis Post at 65 Oak Street. All local organizations are asked to participate. Classic cars are needed to transport our senior veterans, and if you have any questions, you can email Auntie May, A-U-N-T-I-E-M-A-M, mame1953@yahoo.com. And that completes my report. All right, at this point, we're going to move on to the swearing of firefighter Richard Topher. I was just speaking to Mr. Topher. Apparently, he's, his family's a lifelong residence of Oakland, part of the Doyd family, and I believe the one, one fact that you gave me was he's your family's first one to be married in Ponce Church. Is that what it was, or?
Oh, that's what Chuck said. Chuck was actually really good friends with my grandfather.
Okay. So with this, I'm going to give you, let you hold the Bible. Put your hand on the Bible, and you're going to repeat after me. "I, Richard Topher..."
"I, Richard Topher..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"That I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance..."
"And allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"To the same..."
"...and the governments established..."
"And the governments established..."
"...in the United States..."
"In the United States..."
"...and, and in this state..."
"And in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"Under the authority of the people..."
"...and I will faithfully..."
"And I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"Impartially..."
"...and justly..."
"And justly..."
"...perform all the duties..."
"Perform all the duties..."
"...of the office of firefighter..."
"Of the office of firefighter..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"According to the best of my abilities..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
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 Appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it. All right, there you go. Yeah. Is Anna Shoniki here before we open the public? Nope? Okay. Just going to move the podium out, and then we're going to open the public.
Congratulations, welcome.
All right, since our other guest isn't here, I need a motion to suspend the bylaws until we can go out of order. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So who does that rest?
At this time, we're going to just suspend Anna Shoniki at this point until she shows up later, and at this point, we are open to public. Do we have a motion to open to public?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anybody wish to address the council?
Dave Richardson, 320 Ramapo Valley Road.
I brought this subject up last year. It's about these guys riding the sidewalks in town with these electric bicycles. Forty miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, somebody's going to get hurt. They're flying through the middle of town, by the stores, somebody comes out, went to the store, they can't hear this thing coming. And I saw one today going down towards ShopRave, going down towards Portobello. He must have been doing 30 miles an hour on the sidewalk. I mean, can't they pass a law in this town and say, keep these things off the sidewalk?
Well, you know what I'd like to do? I'd like to pass that on to the Public Safety Committee. John or Kevin, can you guys take a look at that and report that to the chief?
Sure. I mean, somebody's going to get hurt. Is that what it's going to take for somebody to get hurt or killed?
Good idea.
By, by these people?
Good idea. Good idea.
I mean, I brought this up last year, and nothing happened. They're still on the sidewalks. I see it every day. Every day.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll have the committee, we'll have a report back next meeting with what their findings are.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
Al Bigliaro, 137 Hiawatha Boulevard.
So you leave...
Al Bigliaro, 137 Hiawatha. Okay, so I'm living in town close to 28 years. I've never seen the town look as bad as it does now. Gravel everywhere. They finished the sidewalks on Seminole. Don't they clean up after themselves? Who's watching these contractors? That's my question. Is Boswell engineer, the project manager on every job? They're absentee landlords. They, I've been up and down that street. I live there. I spoke to the officer watching it. I didn't see them, not once, and I was there four days in a row. It's a joke. It's a, it's a joke. They, they paved in front of my house after PSCNG did the gas lines. My car was bottoming out and going into my own driveway. They come back, they patch it. I could fish in front of my, in front of my driveway when it rains. It's terrible. It absolutely is terrible. And Mr. Boswell, who I've been speaking with, and Mr. Kuntz knows that I've been going back and forth with him, three months he hasn't gotten back to me on certain things that I had questions about. So what are we doing with these guys? Where are they? They're, they're, they're terrible. They really are terrible.
So, so I got your address, 127 Hiawatha.
137.
137 Hiawatha. What was your first name again?
Al.
Al. I will reach out to you. Will you be around tomorrow at some point?
Uh, tomorrow, yes.
All right. What's a good time?
I'm right across from the firehouse, so I'm right there.
All right. I will stop by at some point.
Yeah, it's terrible. It really is. Thank you.
You got it. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Good evening. Alexandria Evans, 141 Lakeshore Drive. So I just wanted to say thank you again for listening to the Lakefront Homeowners, and we have gone ahead and established our representatives, so we're ready to move forward, and we'll send out an email tomorrow. And, you know, this has been months and months that we've been waiting to have this second meeting, so thank you again, and we're looking forward to hearing you, hearing from you and sitting together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Motion to close.
Hang on, wait, wait, wait. One more, one more second.
Not as young as I used to be.
None of us, sorry.
Thank you.
Ben Casio, 45, Lakeshore Drive. I'm here to support our lakefronts, as you all know, but what's more, more important at this moment, as many of you know, I've been involved in land use my entire career as an attorney. Many of you may not know, I wrote the first ordinance for Oakland back in 1976, and I, I represent a lot of clients on applications within this town. I'm a resident of this town, and it pains me to drive up and down Main Street, up and down around Favela Road. It's going to hell in a handbasket. Stores are becoming vacant, get no support or encouragement from the town to establish businesses, only have things thrown in the way to prevent development. Now, you know, the business area, I think, should be treated better than our own, our own citizens, because that's your lifeblood. That's what people see when they come through town. As, as you are intimately aware, when I represented Luck Oil, we still have the drugstore vacant and abandoned. It looks like hell, only because we don't get the support to encourage businesses to establish. All we have is, is hindrance thrown in their, in their way as they try to, to, to progress. I represented Pula at the corner of Powder Mill and Ramapo Valley Road, next to the overpriced gas station, and they couldn't, they can't afford, because of the economic situation that's going on in the last couple of years, they, they couldn't afford to get their financing and proceed with their project. We had previously had gotten them the approval to put, to move their restaurant on that site. We got the approvals, but they weren't able to build it because you don't have septic, which we've been talking about for the 40 years that I've been in town. So they got, they got, they did get approval for a combination residence retail on that site, but they haven't been able to afford to proceed because of the economy. I've had to ask for one-year extension already, which expires next month. I have to come back before the board again filing an entire application with all the fees, costs, experts. It cost them over $10,000 for the extension last time. It's going to cost them as much if not more this time. That's not encouraging to businesses. That's an impediment. Businesses don't feel like they're getting the support of the municipality. The other night, last week, I represented Tina at the nail salon. Been there for 23 years. Twenty-three years. She wanted to add another beauty procedure to her practice by doing eyebrows. They turned her down. She's going out of business. She's going to leave town. She's a resident of this town. You know, businesses should get more, more help and more support, not hindrance. You know, the downtown area is going to continue to go to hell until this town changes attitude toward businesses and starts encouraging it instead of discouraging it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to close.
No, we're closed.
If I may, Mark Skanga, 141 Lakeshore. I want to echo Alex's thank yous about getting things going, and I just want to continue to say there are many of us who feel so strongly about the lake, about the waterways, about the ecosystem, and about what this means for our tax base and for our home values, and we are looking to you for help and support. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's John Casado. Live at 189 Lakeshore Drive. Thanks for the opportunity. I've been here since 2002. We moved in a long time ago, and, and we've always been gung ho supporting the lake. We've paid whatever suggested fees they've asked us to pay by living on the lake there, and we've also even joined the Beach Club just for the extra support. My band play has been playing there since 2011. We proudly raise $20,000 a year for them now, and we still do. So, you know, I've always had an interest in the lake. The only, the biggest issue for me, and the problem with the lake is that it, not to beat a dead horse, this is obvious, but is that it empties faster than it, it fills up faster than it empties. Okay, on the lake on its own, it would be able to maintain itself, but as a result of the, the water coming in, we know it can't empty as fast as it comes in, and that's really the problem. When I moved in, there was a wonderful project at the end of my block. I don't know who financed it, but they rebuilt the spillway there, and now there's a big, beautiful concrete spillway at the end of, where the lake, where the water transfers from the lake to the river. That was probably specked out and designed 20, 22 years ago. So the, the problem is that the design to me now is obsolete, and that's really the point that needs to be revisited. If that could be made wider, maybe a little deeper, but it doesn't even, if it could just be made, another, it might, some engineer will come up with an hour, but if it could be made wider, the lake will be able to maintain itself. More, we're going to get more water from this development on, that's going up there. It's going to be more water coming in too, so we need some relief. And the only way to stop the public town water from infringing on private property is to make an adjustment like that. You could either open the outlet or stop the inlet, which wouldn't be very attractive. So I, I hope there's some thought put into that, because I don't see any other way you can keep the lake from filling up faster than it empties out, and I don't think that's fair for some of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Motion to close?
So moved.
Go second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. It looks like the Girl Scouts are here, so I'd like to bring us right back to the most regular part of the agenda, going back to Anna Shoniki. Would you like to address the council with your presentation?
You can do this.
Hi, my name is Anna Shoniki, and I'm a member of Girl Scout Troop 95388. I'm a junior Indian Hills High School in Oakland, and I've been a Girl Scout for the past 12 years, and I'm recipient of both the Bronze and Silver Awards. I'm currently working to complete my Gold Award project. The Gold Award is the highest level award a Girl Scout can receive and focuses on finding solutions to problems that girls observe within their community. For my Gold Award project, I've found that the lack of knowledge and resources available for children and teens struggling with mental health in Bergen County to be extremely alarming. This is why for my Gold Award, I've organized a free wellness event to promote people and organizations that specialize in mental health and overall well-being. For this event, I have gathered together several different organizations, ranging from therapists, yoga instructors, healthy supplement sellers, et cetera. This way, several different groups will be present in one place and will be able to more effectively make their resources known to the public. This will also, this event will also have wellness activities located outside, run by student volunteers, such as making stress balls and zine gardens, all those kinds of things. Presentations will be run every 10 to 15 minutes, led by the organizations that are attending the event, and they'll lead people through breathing exercises and other self-combing methods. This event will take place at Valley Middle School from 1:00 to 3:00 PM on June 8th. This event will be a lot of fun. We're currently looking to get pliables to come and give out free bowls, as well as a donut truck to come and hand out free donuts. Mike's Hot Dogs will also be there giving out free hot dogs. I'm personally really looking forward to this event, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing it.
Okay, we're up to approval of minutes. We have April 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pigna Tally?
Kent Stane.
Council President Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamena?
Yes.
Okay, we have April 30th, 2024, executive minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If anybody has any discussion, it has to be done in executive. Anybody have any issues? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pigna Tally?
Kent Stane.
Council President Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamena?
Yes.
Okay, we have April 30th, 2024, executive minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If anybody has any discussion, it has to be done in executive. Anybody have any issues? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pigna Tally?
Kent Stane.
Council President Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamena?
Yes.
Okay, we've got two proclamations. First one is for recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2024. Whereas mental health is essential part of overall well-being impacting individuals, families, and communities across Oakland, Bergen County, New Jersey, whereas one in five American adults experience a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health, and whereas despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help, and whereas early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life, and whereas May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources, and now therefore be resolved, I, Eric Kamala Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the borough of Oakland, Bergen County, Jersey, Bergen County, and the state of New Jersey. I encourage all residents of the borough of Oakland, New Jersey to, one, educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Two, challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Three, seek help if they are struggling with mental health and encourage others to do so, do the same. Four, support organizations to provide mental health services and advocacy. Create a safe and supportive environment for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental well-being and seek help when needed. In the witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause, cause the seal of the borough of Oakland, Bergen County, State of New Jersey to be affixed on this day, 14th of May, 2024. Mayor Eric Kamala. Next proclamation we have is for our DPW. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of, support of an understanding and informed citizens, citi-citizens, citizenary is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Mayor Eric Kamala, of the borough of Oakland, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th of 2024, National Public Works Week. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the borough of Oakland to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Given to me, given under my hand and seal the borough of Oakland, State of New Jersey, this 14th day of May, 2024. Eric Kamala. I just want to point out Oakland has 60 miles of roads, 60 miles of water main. We've got stormwater management. They plow our roads. They take care of our rec fields and our facilities. I mean, these, these are the people that really keep this town really moving, running, and, and make it, you know, the rec facilities in the shape that they're in. So I mean, it's really, it's, it's, these people should really be recognized. They, they are really the heart and soul of what you see that takes place within the, to the borough. So I want to thank everybody. All right, I've got two appointments, appointment to the library board trustees. I got Lucille Nicholson. This is a mayoral appointment. It's a five-year appointment, effective, actually it ends 12/31/28. Also to the, applying another point for the Arts Committee, I've got Brenda Wallace for a one-year term. This is a mayoral appointment with council approval, council consent. Do I have a motion to...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the Borough of Oakland to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Given to me, given under my hand and seal the Borough of Oakland, State of New Jersey, this 14th day of May 2024, Eric Kamala, Mayor. I just want to point out Oakland has 60 miles of roads, 60 miles of water main. We've got stormwater management. They plow our roads. They take care of our rec fields and our facilities. I mean, these, these are the people that really keep this town really moving, running, and make it, you know, the rec facilities in the shape that they're in. So, I mean, it's really, it's, it's, these people should really be recognized. They, they are really the heart and soul of what you see that takes place within the Borough. So, I want to thank everybody. All right, I've got two appointments, appointment to the Library Board Trustees. I got Lucille Nicholson. This is a mayoral appointment. It's a five-year appointment, effective, actually, it ends 12/31/28. Also, to the, applying another point for the Arts Committee, I've got Brenda Wallace for a one-year term. This is a mayoral appointment with council approval, council consent. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the resolutions. We have 24-154 Amendment of Resolution, 24-139, 2024 Tax Appeal Attorney, 24-155 Authorized Grants of Middle for Body Armor, 24-156, Chapter 159 of National Opioid Settlement, 24-157, Renew Interlocal Agreements, No Removal on County Roads, 24-158, Support S2125/A433 Rear Seat Belt Law. This was put together by the high school students at Indian Hills. 24-159, Amend Resolution, 24-138, 24 Tax Appeal Attorney, 24-160, Approve Discharge of Fireworks, Indian Hills Anniversary Celebration. We pulled 24-161, that's out. Moving on to 24-162, Change Order Number One, Lakeside Boulevard Water Main Improvements, 24-163, Approve Connection to Drainage System 84 Monthegan, 24-164, Approve Connection to Drainage System 5 Kiowa, 24-165, Resolution Authorizing Auction of Surplus Vehicles, 24-166, Authorization of Rec, Free Recreation Funds, 24-167, Hire DP, Department of Public Work Seasonal Laborers, 24-168, Amend SLEO 3, Shared Services Agreement with the Oakland K-8 Schools for Year 24, 2024 to 2025, 24-169, Authorized Tax Refund for 29 Oak Street, 24-170, Authorized Tax Refund 22 Lenape Lane, and 24-171, Authorized Tax Refund for Exempt Veteran. Anybody wish to have any other pulls that I've pulled out?
Couldn't we just get 156?
156? National Opioid Settlement? Also, I'd like to pull out 24-171. Except for 24-156 and 24-177, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Didn't you say you pulled 161?
Yeah, 161 too. 161 is just, it's off the agenda.
It's off the agenda.
Yeah, took that off the agenda.
Who was the second?
Who was the second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay. Council Talamini, 24-156, Chapter 159, National Opioid Settlement.
I just have, so we're receiving some money, and do we know what we're doing with it? Are we, do we expect more? Do we, you know?
Over the course of probably the next 15, 16 years, we're going to see a lot more money. You can expect this sort of payment every year annually for that period of time. That was how the opioid, you know, the nationwide opioid class action settlement structured. There's a number of, you know, retailers that are included and, you know, pharmaceutical companies, everything from Walmart to actual producers of the, you know, of the opioids themselves. I think that there still may be some coming that are in the works, so we receive these annual payments. And right now, municipal alliance is kind of overseeing the use of these funds. Within the list of approved uses that are contained in the settlement agreement, there are certain things you can do with the money, certain things that you cannot. So, right now, it's being overseen by the municipal alliance.
All right, that was it. Thank you. Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Roll call for 24-156, Chapter 159, National Opioid Settlement.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, only thing we have left is 24-171, Authorized Tax Refund for Exempt Veteran. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
I'm sorry, what are we voting?
This is for?
171.
171. Oh, yes.
Exempt Veteran.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Kent Stane.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, that wraps up our resolutions. Moving on to ordinance, we've got introduction of 24 Capitol, 945 Capitol Ordinance. As you know, we heard testimony on this last week by our administrator. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
And final adoption will be May 28th, council meeting.
With public.
With public comment. Okay. We got 24 Code 946, Ordinance Establishing a Dust Control Policy. This was a recommendation that came from Councilwoman Gofredo concerning the dump on West Oakland Ave as a way to tighten up, you know, some of the dust or issues that we might be dealing with. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney to give us a quick.
Yeah, sure, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to point out, of course, that this is applying to our commercial properties and not specifically targeted at any specific property or use in town, but it is based off, and I believe you took the initiative to call the clerk in Dearborn, Michigan?
Yes.
To get a copy of this ordinance, and it's based off that ordinance, and it's related to controlling businesses which may release excessive amounts of dust and sediment into the air, and making sure that they have certain control policies, and if not, a fine mechanism for the Borough to deal with such an issue. But again, this is not targeted at any specific business use. It's a general ordinance related to commercial businesses in the town.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
And final adoption will be May 28th with public comment. Okay, work session, we have none. Anybody have any new business from the council? Not seeing any? Does anybody have any old business? Actually, I have a piece of old business. There seems to be some confusion going around on social media concerning the property behind Indian Hills High School, and what's happening is they're blaming the council for approving this project. And I'd like to set the record straight because this was not a council decision, therefore I'd like to have our attorney explain to the public how the process of builders remedy works, what a project of this magnitude.
Sure. So, Mayor, as you know, going back 2015, the Affordable Housing Legislation, the Round Three going to the courts, Oakland entered into a settlement agreement for this project that was mandated by the courts. Once that was done in accordance with the settlement agreement, the developer at that time, K. Abnian, made an application to the planning board. The planning board then, in accordance with the settlement, approved the project. Then the council subsequently entered into a developers agreement, the developers agreement being for the protection of the citizens to offer certain bonds, so that if K. I. were now in R. is unable to finish the project, it doesn't just sit vacant and dormant, there are bonds in place to make sure that the, that the work gets done, that it at least returns it to the standards that it was at. So, that was why the council adopted developers agreement, but the actual approval itself was subject to our Affordable Housing Settlement approved by the planning board.
Thank you so much. I think it was important to clarify that for the public because there's a lot of disinformation and misinformation going around. All right, well, moving on to Borough County Council Committee Liaison Report. Mr. Talamini?
Yes. I have, we will have the parade on June 1st, the baseball parade, baseball softball parade. That's a great event. If you, if you participate in baseball or softball, it's a, it's a great time to go down there. It ends at the field. They have a whole ceremony down there, the kids make banners, and, and then there's a little bit of a, a little, a small, a small little carnival, we'll call it. It's a fun day. I enjoy it a lot. And then also, the Great, the Great Oak Park opening will be on June 8th. That's, that's, that's going to be a fun event also. They have the, the new, what do we call it?
Pavilion.
The pavilion, pavilion down there will be music and, and fun. Be a great day. And then football and cheer summer camp registration is now live, and you go to www. oaklandrec.org. Sign up for that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For the senior citizens, there is limited space available for the Memorial Day picnic, which is going to be Thursday, May 30th. The cost is $5, and you can register at the office at the Senior Center. Also, they're going to have a patriotic wreath workshop Thursday, June 6th. The cost is $10, which includes all the supplies you need, and you also need to register at the office at the Senior Center. For the Environmental Commission, they held their Step Up to Cleanup. They had 25 people volunteer to clean up areas at the Van Allen House, Great Oak Park, Stewart's Park, and as a thank you, they offered a lunch for those who volunteered. This was a great opportunity for people to help beautify our town. We recognize that next year, we need to start a little bit earlier, asking volunteers to step up, but they had a good time and they did collect a lot of garbage. So, thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Shalae?
No, thank you. On May, on May 6th, I had the pleasure of attending Shade Tree to, to assist Ms. Gofredo because she had another commitment. And real quick, there is a unfortunate, there was a resignation on Shade Tree Commission, Mr. LaForja, who's been there, a longstanding member, has resigned, so we have one open position on Shade Tree. If anyone's interested, please send a citizens', citizens' form to the mayor so we can sign. We're looking to fill one position on Shade Tree. Good news today, the annual planting started for the Shade Tree Commission. As of today, 35 new trees were planted in town. There were spots such as Great Oak Parks, there was, there was adopted tree plantings, and there were some spots in town over by Riverside Park where we planted trees. So, 35 trees were planted today for Shade Tree. For the Flood Commission, I have to say, I had the privilege of actually walking the river with the Flood Commission on Saturday. We started at the Lenape Lane Bridge and went all the way up to the Glen Gray, and with the Flood Commission, walked through the river, went through where you see trees, where you see people putting debris in the river, where we have to clean it out. So, just a reminder that, you know, people on the lone river, please do not dump your leaves in the back. It falls in the river, it clogs drains, spouts, and it causes problems. Obviously, trees falling, nothing we can do about it, but we go, we look, we mark the trees for removal and for river cleanup. It was an extremely interesting event, I will tell you. They'll probably yell at me for this. There's great trails along, along the river to walk and hike, so Oakland residents should take advantage of it. The, and then the Public Events Committee, Russ hit on two, two to three, and the mayor hit on the events, so just a reminder, for the Memorial Day Parade, as Eric said, we are looking for a few more participants, cars, or if anyone wants to march, please reach out to antiMaine@1953@yahoo.com. We are looking to add more people to the parade. Russ touched on the Fever Pitch portion where the Public Events Works and Inductment Rec for the, for the baseball parade. The Oakland Carnival is June 12th through the 15th, and then on June 8th, June 8th also, there is the, they'll be working with, with the Arts Club regarding the opening of the pavilion, excuse, the pavilion from 12 to 5.
Let's go ahead, Eric. Thank you. Councilman McCann?
Note report, but I'd like to address a couple of the comments that were made, particularly by attorney, by Ben, by Ben Casio. He brings to light some of the issues I know that you campaigned on, Eric, as it relates to economic development in the downtown area. Just to remind everyone, we have started, we had a presentation by our planner in terms of refurbishing the downtown area, but it sounds like what, what Mr. Casio was saying is a little bit more detailed than that. I'd like to reach out to him because he brought, he brought up a lot of anecdotal issues that sounded more like economic problems with his individual clients, but if he, I would like to get his ideas as it relates to how he thinks, A, it's not a business-friendly environment, and B, what, what, what does he think it would, we should be looking at in terms of making it a business-friendly environment? That goes hand in hand with the downtown, looking at the downtown refurbish. It also goes hand in hand with the Forward Planning Committee that we're, we're putting together. Part of that is looking at, obviously, the affordable housing issue. Also, economic development comes under there, as well as the lake issue that we, that we discussed. So, I will reach out to, to Ben and get his ideas as it relates to that. And as it, and one final point, as it relates to the dust ordinance, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Gofredo for coming up with that idea to look at. It wasn't, and just to be clear, from a government perspective, it wasn't, what made us look at it was the, the issue of the recycling, because dust is one of the problems that comes up with that. But it's not, it wasn't just that area, as we looked into it, it was some other areas in town. And the slide, that proposed site, there's some other areas where stuff's going into the air that we need to take a look at in terms of providing a healthier environment for the residents. So, congratulations, George. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd just like to add what Councilman McCann was saying about comments from Mr. Casio. One of the comments from Mr. Casio was about sewers. Now, we, we would love to have sewers in town. We can't do it at a stroke of, the old cliche, stroke of a pen. We have to get approval from the state. The state has been burdening us with, with regulation after regulation after regulation, postponements, new requirements, time and time again. So, yes, once we get sewers downtown, you will see an explosion of businesses, that's for sure. But, you know, we can't just do it on our own. We can't just sign an order tomorrow to put sewers in town. We have to have the approval from the DEP, and it's, it's not, it's a very laborious item for us to get involved with, but we will, we still are. Hopefully, we'll be successful in the near future, but we can't put a timeframe on it because the DEP is the one who controls it. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Councilman Slasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates for tonight. From the Green Team, the group continues to seek volunteers if you're interested in helping out. Their next meeting is scheduled for May 23rd at 7:00 p.m. in the Senior Center. From the library, Yoga with Sonia continues on Tuesday nights through May. On Sunday, May 19th at 2:00 p.m., they will host classical guitarist Alfredo Festa live on the library stage. Registration is required. On Monday, May 20th at 6:30, they will have the travel program, Explore America's Treasures, Explore Parts Unveiled. On Tuesday at 6:30, they will have an art reception, which is open to the public, for their May artist, who is a local resident, Joe Porus, whose works are on display all of May on the library stage. Also, they'll have a teen trivia event on the 22nd at 3:00 p.m., and on May 23rd at 4:00 p.m., they will have a cool new program for kids called Battle Chefs. Kids who sign up form into teams and create culinary masterpieces and fight for first place. Lastly, also on the 23rd at 6:30, they will have painting, beef-themed birdhouses. For this event, registration is required, and there's a $5 fee. Just as a reminder, you can register for any event online using their advanced calendar or by calling the library. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Salianni, for attending the Shade Tree Commission.
Access for All met on Wednesday, May 1st. The committee is speaking with Mike Wadignino about doing a mural on one of the walls at the rec field. The committee has wonderful new members with a variety of specialties such as nursing, occupational therapy, art teacher. They're all working together with their specialties, bringing it to the table to make this project happen. Access for All will be marching in the Memorial Day Parade. Access for All is also busy planning for the Oakland Carnival and the special event on Saturday, June 15th, where they plan to have their own hours of operation to allow individuals to enjoy the carnival with slower rides, limited lights, and sounds. Great work, everyone. Their next meeting will be held on June 5th at the senior center at 7:30 p.m. OCC met on Monday, June 6th, hence why I couldn't go to the Shade Tree. Here in this room, the committees, including the newsletter committee, welcome website, television committee, are always seeking new volunteers. A special note, the Oakland TV had submitted several programs and was nominated in several categories to receive an award at the Jersey Access Group Conference to be held this Thursday, which is an annual gathering of several local access television channels across New Jersey. Commissioner Chairman Ryan Shortfinger and Oakland TV Director of Programming Bill Sisti will be attending the conference and hope to bring some good news back to Oakland. Their next meeting will be held July 1st, 2024, 7:00 p.m. here in this room. That's all I have.
Okay.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Gofredo, any more progress with the plaque for Fred Burks? Down here, no?
We're working on it.
They're working on it?
We, they came up with the design, but it was a little crazy and it was getting very expensive and we're dialing it back a bit.
Yeah, they were discussing it.
There's your page.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're up to bills to be paid. Councilwoman Gofredo?
Total bills to be paid, $565,745.94. So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next Borough Council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 28, 28, 2024, 7:00